Okay.
Here the gavel.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular council meeting of January 7th, 2020.
Here.
Has everybody been writing 2020 on their checks yet? Or, no, not used to that yet. Okay, so, I would like to call the meeting to order. Joining us tonight by teleconference is Mayor Fish. So you'll be hearing her voice, but she's not here. But she's gonna be here in spirit and in voice. So, Madam Clerk, if you will please do the roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chavez.
Here.
Mayor Fish.
Yes.
Okay. I think, I'll take that as a "here." Okay.
Yes, here, yes.
Thank you. Can you hear us okay, Nan?
I can. I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. We can hear you. Okay. So we're gonna start off with our invocation, as we always do, and we're also going to follow that up with the Pledge of Allegiance. So after the invocation, if you'll remain standing. Our invocation tonight will be given by a familiar face, Jerry Jambasian, owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies. I didn't know this, Jerry, but I'm told that you are gonna be celebrating your 65th year in business.
Yes.
This year. So congratulations. Of course, we're gonna have to have a bigger event later on in the year for something like that, so, that's amazing. Well, you started when you were two?
One.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. And our Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be given by Boy Scout Troop 174. Scouts presenting the flags are Jordan Mendoza, Jean Naono, Nate Haas, Hunter Abbott, and Kendrick Mui. Troop 174's camping trip for January will be at Mecca Mud Hills near India. It is the troop's first practice campere campout, where the scouts will have the opportunity to brush up on their scouting skills, such as first aid, pioneering, fire building, cooking, et cetera, while enjoying the view of the Coachella Valley and Salt and Sea, as long as the Salt and Sea is still there. I think it's still there.
Probably has water now.
A little bit of water now, I think, yes. So Troop 174 meets every Thursday from 7:30 to 9 o'clock at Westminster Presbyterian Church, near the corner of Temple City Boulevard and Live Oak. They are a backpacking and backcountry camping troop. Boys interested in backpacking and backcountry camping are welcome to check 'em out. So with that, Jerry, if you don't mind coming up, and everyone, please rise.
Would you pray with me, please? Our gracious heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings we receive from you each day. You are so good to an undeserving people. As we have entered a new decade, we thank you for the previous decade of hope and progress. We thank you for the local leadership that we have enjoyed and look forward to what you have for us. We ask for wisdom and discernment for Mayor Fish, Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, and councilmembers Mann, Sternquist, and Yu. Many new projects are on the horizon, including a remodeled library and our first new park in over 60 years. We have many proud traditions that celebrate our youth, including our upcoming 76th Annual Camellia Festival, celebrating fun for everyone. Our Father, we pray that we would continue to be one of the safest cities in California. Thank you for the work of our sheriffs and fire department, along with neighborhood watch and public safety. With all the good, we realize in a fall, we live in a fallen world. We pray for our military that have been recently deployed, that you would keep them from harm and bring them safely back home to their loved ones. As we just celebrated Christmas, I can't help but think of how many Christmas cards I have seen that have the saying, "Peace on earth and goodwill to men." Lord, that is our wish for this new decade. We ask this all in your name and for your glory. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jerry.
Detail, forward march. Detail, halt. Post.
Although it's not in uniform, pledge your right hand over your heart. Scout salute, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Detail, three, four. Detail, forward march.
Okay, so before the young men leave, scouts, before you leave, who was the voice? Who was the voice? Who, who was it? What's his name?
Jean.
Jean. You have a future in broadcasting. Very good. Very good.
That's a great voice.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, well, you can always tell when we have ceremonial matters on tap, because the house is full. And so that's a good thing. So, we do have several ceremonial matters tonight, and of course, as many times, we always start off with our Pet of the Month. I'd like to welcome Sidney Rigney up from San Gabriel Valley Humane Society for President, and she's gonna introduce our Pet of the Month. So Cindy?
Welcome to all of you. Thank you for having us again for the Pet of the Quarter. This is Bella Blue. And this is Gosha, one of our big dog volunteers. We are very reliant on the volunteers down at San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. They do fabulous job for us, helping with grooming, walking, socializing cats, you name it, they do it. Sometimes it's hard to tell the difference between staff and volunteers. But the focus tonight is Bella Blue. She has a look of, whoa, what's happening? Bella is a four-year-old pit bull mix. We're guessing there's some Catahoula in her perhaps. She is small for a Staffordshire mix. She's got gorgeous coloring. We've never seen this before. She is so unusual. We love her pieces, and Gosha's gonna give you a little more insight into this wonderful baby's personality.
Hello. So Bella Blue, as you can see, is a very, very balanced dog. She is quite low to medium energy, loves people, and interacts very well with all people that she meets. She loves going on the walks, is quite good on the leash. We helped her also in the shelter several columns, so she knows how to sit, shake, lie down. She's just a very, very sweet dog for someone that, wanna balance dog, maybe doesn't wanna run every weekend around our local mountain. Just like a lot of walks and visits around the neighborhood, and she finds for Bella. Quite a good dog. So please, spread a word about Bella. She's definitely one of the most originally looking dogs that we had for a very long time. I've been volunteering in the shelter for almost five years, and I've never seen a dog like Bella. So she's definitely one of the great personalities and really beautiful looks in a dog. Bella is, is definitely a great dog.
Well, thank you very much. Jerry? Jerry, looks like she's got her eye on you.
They always speak Jerry.
Yes.
She called me more than she has.
I saw Mike, when you're calling, take a second look, so you might wanna walk in or by him.
I have two dogs, two cats alone.
So, so Gosha?
I know where we're at, at 51 East Grand Avenue. So do not stop on that.
So does she get to spend the night?
Yes, so she's, she's having sleep early in the night. She's going to stay in my home, which will be spoiled tremendously for around hours or so.
All right. Well, good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. She's a very nice looking animal. I'm glad Jean's not here. Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Our next ceremonial matter will be the introduction of our Holiday Decoration Contest winners. Very excited about that. We have many of them in attendance tonight, and however, to give us a presentation on the contest and the winners, we have our Parks and Rec Director, Adam Matsumoto, here with us tonight. So, Adam, we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Chavez and members of the City Council. Today, tonight, it is my honor to and pleasure to recognize our 2019 Holiday Decorating Contest winners. This year, we have a total of 20 winners, 12 residential and eight businesses. Over the course of two days, not only are city council members, our Parks and Recreation Commission, and city staff canvassed the entire city. We broke up the city into four different quadrants, with residential winners representing three in each one of those quadrants. We really wanted an equal representation throughout Temple City. And the judging committee had a really, really difficult task with all the wonderfully decorated homes within the city. The Holiday Decorating Contest, the winners were notified in December and received a lawn sign for all the winners, which we have right here. And in addition to those lawn signs, we also wanted to recognize all of our winners here with our city council, and we have a certificate of recognition for all those winners. We do have a slideshow presentation. We wanted to display to everybody, those here with us and those watching through our streaming, of all the beautifully decorated homes. So we'll start off with the residential.
Adam, before you start.
Oh, absolutely.
Can, members of the audience, can you see the screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure there was too much light.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So we're, we'll start off with our residential winners. The first was 5136 Storine. We have 5209 Baldwin. 5531 Robin Hood. 5947 Agnes.
That was the Southern California Edison winner also. Yeah.
9019 Rancho Rial. 9081 Emperor. 9309 Broadway. 9320 Blackley. 9335 Pentland. 9837 Flaherty. And finally, 10520 Olive Street. And those are our residential winners. If we want, we can give them a big round of applause. And in addition to our residential, we have our business winners. We have the Omeida Society. Camellia Square. First Baptist Church. Quality Bookkeeping.
Yay.
Super Pets. Temple City Bike Shop. The Temple Townhouse Association. And Tree Line Realty. And those are our business winners for this year, 2019. And now if I could call upon city council to come to the front.
So why don't we go up, and we've got some certificates to give to those who are here, and we can have council come up and get a photo of her, will we?
All right. So I've checked in most everybody, and I'll go through everybody that's checked in, but at the end, if somebody has filtered in afterwards, please, if you can raise your hand so we can recognize you as well. But first, I'd like to call up 5209 Baldwin, Gabriel, and Jennifer Pedraza.
Next up, we have 5531 Robin Hood, Mark and Regina Soriano.
Next up, we have 9309 Broadway, Jimmy Law. All right. Next, we have 9335 Pentland, Christopher Dodge and family. And next, we have our business winners, Omeida Society, Kenny. We have Camellia Square, John Lee. And John is also gonna be getting his lawn sign as well tonight. Next up, we have Quality Bookkeeping, Kathleen Chambers. Next up is the Temple City Bike Shop, Ron McKernan.
Andy, you should come up with him. You're just as much responsible as he is.
I actually said so.
He had a long ways to come.
All right. And we also have our Temple City Townhouse Association, Irma, and we also have the board president.
Elena.
Elena. So, is there anybody else that's here for the award that maybe we didn't get a chance to recognize? Okay, I think that's everybody that's here.
Oh. I don't wanna see you lying in the picture.
You gotta find one of them.
Can you get everybody, Jerry?
Let me get in the back there.
I did.
Yes.
Good. See everybody soon.
Guys look too good.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, man. Good job.
the holidays. But remember that we do have an ordinance that you have to take your lights down. No, wait, I won't say that. We won't go there.
They leave their lawn sign up.
Yeah, you can leave your lawn sign up all year if you want. There you go. All right. Congratulations. Very, very nice. I know a few of us up here got a chance to participate in the judging, and it was hard. It was tough. There was a lot of beautiful homes out there, and they did a fantastic job, so congratulations again. Okay, and Adam, thank you and your staff for putting that all together this year. Very good job. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our third item, and that is our retirement recognition. It's always nice to be recognized for retirement. I don't know that I'll ever enjoy that, but we'll see, one of these days maybe. But we have a special individual here tonight with us, Mr. Timothy Ting. Mr. Ting, where are you? You're there in the back. Why don't you, why don't you come up here to get yourself prepared, and we're gonna join you in a minute. Just kinda come up here. Mr. Ting has decided to retire from the U.S. Postal Service here in Temple City. He's been with them 32 years.
Wow.
I was speaking with him earlier, and I said, "Well, what are you gonna do now?" And he says, "I'm gonna go back to school." Huh? How do you like that? That's fantastic. I asked, I asked him where he was gonna go, and I said, "You gonna go to PCC?" And he said, "No, I'm gonna to East LA College." So, PCC's a little better, but that's all right.
Go Huskies.
Yeah. I actually went to East LA, East LA College a little bit, so good, good job. So, well, thank you. I would like to present you, if I can have council also come up with me, and we'll get a photo taken with Mr. Ting. Let me, let me come up here, and I'll read the certificate if everybody wants to kinda join this. Mr. Ting, why don't you come up out of here? Congratulations, first of all. I'd like to present you on behalf of the City of Temple City with this certificate of recognition. In recognition of 32 years of dedicated service to the community and residents of Temple City, we extend congratulations and best wishes on the occasion of your retirement, and we wish you the best in this new chapter in your life. Are you excited?
Yes.
All right, good, good. I hope you have a good pension too, as well, right? All right. All right, well, we'll, we'll see. Okay, well, congratulations again. Thank you very much, and I'll give that to you, and I'm sure council wants to congratulate you as well. And we'll come over here and take a photo.
Congratulations.
All right. All right. Hold up a little bit, Mr. Ting.
All right, thank you. Oh, go there?
You can just stand right in the middle. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold up so Jerry, hold it in front of you. Yeah, right here, right here. Hold it up a little bit higher. Like a mugshot. Post office, you know about that. All right, there you go. Thank you very much. Peter, you go in there and see him all the time.
There is not a friendlier postal worker in California than this gentleman.
Frank, you can get up during the public comments and do your things. Not, not right now. Hold on. Hold on, we're not there yet. Thank you. All right. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Ting. Again, congratulations, and nothing but the best in your future endeavors, so. Okay, well, that's it for our ceremonial matters. You can tell that the place is cleared out, so now we're ready to get down to regular business. Okay, so we'll move on to item number six, our public comments on items not listed on the agenda. City council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address the city council is highlighted on the first page of this agenda. So, we have a couple of speaker requests up here I have so far. Lucy, Lucy Liu, come on up.
Good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. I want to remind everyone, it seems very fast, but next Thursday is our very first Neighborhood Watch meeting of 2020. It is at Emperor Elementary in the cafeteria. That is January 16th, if I have my date correct. 5:30 to 7:30, we will have the freshly made street tacos, and we're going to talk about new topics. I don't know exactly what they are yet, because we're getting our presentation next week before the, the area leaders are getting our presentation before the actual meeting, but I'm sure it will also include, it will still include topics of interest, such as burglary and whatnot. So, this is open to the entire city. Everyone is welcome to come. It's a great night to meet your neighbors, ask questions, get updated information about what's going on with regards to crime in town. So, I know Mayor Pro Tem Chavez will be there. Hopefully, other council members can join us, but if not, we have nine other meetings. This is our very first one.
Good. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Steve Stafford?
Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, council members, city staff. Yesterday, at Ralph's Market, I encountered a lady that was being taken advantage of by two males. They were, they offered to try to wax part of her car that had damage on there, and first they wanted $200. I was sitting in my car. Her car, my car's here, and her cars are right, right there in front of mine, and now, and while I'm listening, they're trying to extract like $500. And I finally told her to come over to me, and I told her, "Don't give him any money." And I called the sheriffs. I also realized the car they were in had no plate. And the sheriff's just told me, "This has been going on a lot around here," and yes it has, and it's been a serious problem, not only out with where we go, but on the telephone too. And it needs to be, they, somebody needs to ramp up the efforts to stop these people, because they're just gonna continue to do it. And they knew, they didn't know I was calling the sheriffs, but as soon as the lady stayed there, they finally took off. And the thing that bothered me is they had no plate on the rear of that vehicle, no license plate. You know, these people are just, they're the worst. I just wanted to let all you know this, that it's happening in this city. It surprised the heck out of me last night when I went and did grocery shopping. I think it's important we really watch out for each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Wow, look at that, you can get a hand. Thank you for being such a good citizen. That's a good, a good thing to do. Okay, now we have Franklin Rudell. Franklin, where are you? I just saw you. There you go.
I just wish to thank the mayor and the city council people for the presentation you made to the postman, because he helped make my day many an easy day come tax time. And, and the things that he taught me and everything else, if to me, was only a soup of wine. I would like to make another comment too, if I may, along with this, and then I'll not bother you anymore. If, some of you know that we have a barber shop in town, they're at the corner of Hermosa and Temple City Boulevard, and they, they're not that new, but they're fairly new. They're young men who have...
I'm sorry, you said a barber shop? What did you say? What did you say at the corner?
At the corner of Hermosa, no, not Hermosa. I take that back.
What business? Woodruff. Temple City Barber Shop.
Woodruff, I'm sorry, you're right.
Okay. You're talking about a barber shop?
Barber shop.
Okay.
And they have commented to me that they thought that there were some other types of crime happening in the city, which I don't know whether it's true or not, but I've always committed them, because several of them have graduated, they're Temple City High School graduates, which I think is most admirable, that they've decided to pick our city to be where they had, had their barber shop. I find it's a good place to go, but I just mentioned that, that the sheriff might wanna drop by sometime and just let them know how good a city they have, because I think it's great. I didn't agree with the comments that were being made, that just, so.
Well, I would, I would recommend that you could also invite those individuals to any of, of course, our sheriff meetings, last Wednesday of the month, at 7 o'clock right here in the community room. And then also, on the same day as our, and I'm sure our city manager was probably gonna mention it later on, but we have a special evening on, on the 16th of this month to meet our captain here at City Hall as well, and enjoy a hamburger dinner, so keep an eye out for that. What are we calling that again, Brian?
Burgers and brats.
Burgers and brats.
They might, um...
No, not brats.
No.
Brats.
Brats. I'm having a hard time hearing tonight.
I thought you were talking about the council, but you weren't.
Sorry, Nan. Messing this up for you. So, okay, burgers and brats.
I gotcha.
Okay. You knew what I was wanting to say.
No, I was, I was gonna mention that they, they are... No, I was, I was going to mention that they, they are, were a few years back honored by the Chamber in, in being the business of the town.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, their haircuts.
I think they do a good job.
Good, all right.
Take care of me, though.
Thank you. Thanks for those kind words from Mr. Ting. I'm sure he appreciates it. Okay, any other public comments? Seeing no one coming forward, I will close public comments, and we will now move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, any objection? Hearing none. The consent calendar is approved. We will now move on to item number eight, public hearing. There is none. Number nine, unfinished business, none. And we will now move on to item ten, new business, the adoption of an urgency ordinance number two zero dash one zero three eight U prohibiting within the MUC zone, public market uses and the subdivision of parcels and tenant spaces. And we will have a presentation tonight by your interim community development director, Scott. Go ahead. Or did you want to introduce him, or? All right.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. The moratorium is looking at the mixed-use C-zone, which is a portion of the crossroads specific plan. The crossroads specific plan has a vision. It is located at, the center of the crossroads specific plan is located at the intersection of Las Tunas Drive and Rosemead Boulevard. The vision for that district was to create a diversity of housing options, a unique mix of shops, services, restaurants, entertainment, to provide for some open space, to plan all that based on multiple modes of transportation, to connect that district to the eat and wash, and to be a source of community pride. It was going to do that by focusing growth, not only taking the pressures of growth off the single-family residential zones and pushing it into the specific plan, but then also funneling the highest intensity of growth onto the area west of Rosemead and south of Las Tunas. That's known as the mixed-use core zone. The reason why we focus growth in that area was, number one, because it's a very low-density area. In this slide here, you can see a building footprint diagram, so it shows all the building footprints in yellow, and so you can see that there's a lot of open area in the mixed-use C-zone, the area south of Las Tunas and west of Rosemead Boulevard. We also plan to focus growth in this area because it's buffered from the single-family zones. The single-family zones in this slide are shown in yellow to the north and to the east. And one of the other key reasons was that this is an area of the city that has some very large parcels, and when you're trying to create mixed-use growth and trying to create a cohesive district, having large parcels allows to, allow us to create that. One of the goals in the specific plan is to create a mixed-use district that's well-designed, and do that by creating a cohesive district and corridor that contains an integrated mix of different uses. The two key phrases that I'd like to pull out there is cohesive and integrated. In order to create integrated development and a cohesive development, we need to have these large parcels that can be brought together. One of the challenges we have is that this, the crossroads specific plan doesn't have a minimum tenant size or a minimum parcel size. So, once someone could come in today and subdivide units or subdivide the land, which would be contradictory to the goal of the crossroads specific plan. So, it's that reason that we're proposing tonight to adopt a moratorium on any further subdivision of tenant spaces or land within this mixed-use C-zone of the crossroads specific plan. The proposed ordinance would also propose a moratorium on public market uses. A public market use is kind of a new use that we're seeing expanding right now in the land use sector. It's generally defined as a creative, fun, experience-focused destination. It can combine food, retail, and entertainment. It often includes multiple small spaces, booths, counters, where people can mix about. And some local examples of this is the Indiana Colony in Pasadena, Steel Craft in Long Beach, and they have some other locations, and Grand Central Market, which has been around for many decades in downtown Los Angeles. The concern we have is that this is a possible alternative to subdividing space. Someone could just come in and propose one large public market use, which essentially subdivides the space into multiple tenant spaces. And so, we need to take a look, since this is a new type of use, we need to take a look at it and create some regulations to make sure that if, if it does happen, that it's done well, and that it fits with the crossroads specific plan's vision. So, what we're proposing in this moratorium period is to use the first forty-five days of this period to reach out to the property owners within the mixed-use C-zone. Let them know the action that's, if action is taken tonight, let them know what action was taken. We would return to you, this moratorium right now, would, because it's an urgency ordinance, would only apply for forty-five days. So, we would come back to you on February eighteenth with an update and a request to extend that moratorium for a full year from today, from today, tonight. During that full year, we would meet with community members, especially the property owners. We would prepare some draft regulations. Those regulations would go before the planning commission. They would provide a recommendation to you, and then you would review the, the final ordinance that's proposed by staff. So, the recommendation tonight is to, to introduce and read by title and wave further reading the adopted, this urgency ordinance twenty-ten thirty-eight U, which would place a temporary moratorium on the subdivision of tenant spaces, the subdivision of land, and public market uses in the mixed-use C-zone. The moratorium would not apply to mixed-use developments that are in conformance with the intent and development regulations of the specific plan. So, with that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. I will first open it up to any council comments. Are there any comments from council?
I have a question.
Okay. Councilmember Mann?
Yes, so, maybe just to help me understand a little bit clearer, we, we have an adopted new general plan from two years ago, and an adopted crossroads specific plan that outlines future development. So, if someone were to come into a, this zone and propose something that doesn't conform to it, why would we allow that? Why do we need a moratorium on the subdivision?
Yeah. Currently, we don't, in the, let's say, under the prior zoning code, we had regulations on minimum lot sizes and minimum tenant sizes. This specific plan didn't provide for that regulation. So, we're proposing that we adopt some regulation to, to make sure that the intent of, that, that is in the specific plan is fulfilled, and that is to create a cohesive, integrated district.
Yeah, because I, I guess I'm just trying to imagine maybe how it's going to unfold, because it's, I guess, because we spent so much time developing the specific plan and all, all the guidelines, and knowing sort of the businesses and the way that the current configuration is within that specific zone. At some point, we knew that some businesses were either going to close or go out. So, I'm just thinking, was this just something we hadn't, we didn't think about and incorporate into the specific plan? I, I guess I just didn't draw the connection between why the current specific plan didn't have the provisions that would kind of stop this.
I think part of the reason is, is throughout the specific plan process, we were in contact with property owners, and all the property owners at the time were very supportive of the direction and vision of the specific plan. Now, it's become a concern of staff that properties could be subdivided in such a way that would preclude the specific plan from being fulfilled. For instance, parking lots could be subdivided into smaller pieces, and those smaller pieces could be then sold off, and a small little tenant space, a small little standalone restaurant could be built there. The more we see of that sort of thing, the more we know that we're never going to get the type of development that was provided for in the specific plan.
Okay.
And councilman, we, we wouldn't want the specific plan itself to say, "No subdivision." Ultimately, we're going to want the property owners to work together or individually to take their parcels, redo them, redo the configuration, and then potentially subdivide what we call airspace subdivision or condo subdivision, where the lines would be, be drawn for multiple ownership. So, you don't want the specific plan itself to say, "No subdivision," but as Mr. Reimers has said, given some new market potentials that have come up within the last six months or so, we want to study what the options are, and so, how to best bring forward what the vision of the people, the vision of these property owners, and certainly the vision that the five of you adopted would be. And I do want to add, just as much for any of members of the public listening as for the five of you, the process outlined by Mr. Reimers, if it moves quickly and new regulations are brought to you, any ordinance that you adopt, if it's adopted prior to the expiration of the moratorium, it, it would include the rescission of the moratorium. So, the moratorium will go away as soon as community development staff, the owners of these parcels, and public input can bring something to you for a final approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist?
I have a question regarding for the East-West Bankes and the Denny's that was demolished. If East-West Bank went out of business, would this apply to them if someone wanted to come in and subdivide that building? Because it's such an awkward place as it is. So, it would be inclusive of that?
Yes, it would not, it would not allow any subdivision of space as it, yes.
So, anything in that center?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember you? Mayor Fish, did you have any comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I would open up public comments at this time. Anybody from the public wish to come up and speak on this subject? Seeing no, no one, I will close public comments. Now, open it up for any closing council questions or comments.
Mayor Protem Chavez, I'd like to make a quick comment.
Sure.
You know, I, we, the city really spent a lot of time and effort in, in, and also with a lot of public input in producing the general plan as well as the specific plan, the crossroad specific plan here. But I, I think, just like any plans, it was done back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen time, and I think letting it sit on the shelf and not reflecting current market trend is not something we want to do. And then I wanted, you know, really come out to say I really commend and appreciate staff and the city manager bringing this matter back to us, and noticing, when we notice a new market trend, I think for, it is imperative that the city council is a planning body here, that we need to address that planning trend. So, I, I think what's being presented to us is appropriate, because as far as we know, I don't think there are any applications in process. So, I think this gives us a time for staff to bring this matter back to us for a more comprehensive review, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comments? Mayor Fish?
I'm good. I just want to make sure that the vote, I know no one has made an actual motion, but that the vote is just for the forty-five day moratorium, and then after the forty-five day moratorium, then we'll decide if we want to continue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I concur. I think, given the new developments in this area, it makes sense to adopt this ordinance. Give us some more time. We've done this in the past when we've been faced with new issues, things that either maybe weren't considered or didn't come up on the radar at the time, and it always is good to have the time and to vet out things and look at them and decide what is best based on those that are, have an interest in the matter and also our community. So, I think I would, I know I would be in favor of this. So, at this time, I'm hearing no more questions or comments from council. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to move that the council introduce, read by title, wave further reading, and adopt urgent ordinance number twenty dash ten thirty-eight U to temporarily prohibit within the M-C zone, public market uses and a subdivision of parcels and tenant spaces.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember you?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, just as a legal and procedural matter, an urgency ordinance goes into effect immediately under California state law, and this responds to the mayor's comment as well. An urgency ordinance is only good for a period of forty-five days, after which staff must provide you with a report and request an extension. So, we will be back, as Mr. Reimers said, second meeting in February with that report on the actions taken to date, whether staff is going to recommend the extension for ten months and fifteen days, which would give it a total of exactly one year. And so, we'll see you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My majesty clerk, if you would be so kind to read the title of the ordinance, please.
Yes, ordinance number twenty dash one zero three eight U, an urgency ordinance of city council of City of Temple City, establishing a moratorium on the subdivision of any parcel within the MU dash C district and the subdivision of existing building into non-residential tenant spaces.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Scott. Okay, we will now move on to item eleven, update from city manager.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, can I make a statement?
Of course.
I'm actually gonna, hello?
Yes, we're here.
I'm going to go ahead and excuse myself from the rest of the meeting. I'm actually in Sacramento, meeting with legislators on behalf of the community, so I have to catch an early flight, but thank you very much, and I appreciate being included in the meeting tonight.
Well, thank you. Safe travels.
Okay.
Okay, we will now move on to our update from city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Chavez. Just a couple of quick things. Burgers and brass will be January sixteenth. Captain Flores and Greg Chico, our dedicated deputy, will be there. It's a casual affair. It's not, there's no script. It's not like the Neighborhood Watch meetings, where you can just sit for people who've never come to Neighborhood Watch meeting or never met the captain before, or one of our dedicated deputies will be there, just in a very casual atmosphere, to say hello. We'll be right here in the community room. We do ask you to RSVP, though, because we, kind of limited capacity, and we do want to kind of make it more of an intimate affair rather than a big gigantic community. And we'll, we'll, we'll look to do some of these more in the future, but this will be our first one, so.
So, they're going to RSVP to where?
To, to our office here at City Hall.
They can call, they must call.
They, they can call or email my assistant, Iliana Flores, six-two-six, two-eight-five, two-one-seven-one, for the operator. To address just one of the issues earlier about crime in the city, well, one of the things we'll be talking about with Neighborhood Watch is, as of the latest report we just all received a little bit ago, our Part One crimes are down to a five-year low. I'll be checking pretty soon if they're even longer than that. So, our Part One crimes are at a five-year low. Our residential burglaries are also down to a five-year low as well. So, that is thanks to all of our community volunteers, our sheriff's department, our staff, and thank you to the council for providing the additional funding that we use to do additional patrols, other activities as well. You do that every single budget year for the last, I think, about four years now, so thank you. That allows, you, you provide us with the resources to provide staff with the flexibility to provide those extra services out in the community. So, that is really, it's great work by all. Lastly, if you read, I forwarded you a L.A. Times article today, SB fifty by Senator Weiner from Northern California has been reintroduced in a different way, but without going through a fully in-depth analysis, I still think we have some of the same concerns we expressed before about what that means. And you just took what is one of the ultimate, this, one of the biggest decisions any local government takes in terms of regulating land use. And it's truly a local control issue. SB fifty is, has some elements that could be very disconcerting in terms of local land use control for every municipality and county throughout the state of California. So, we'll, we'll be bringing that back to you, and obviously, working with the league, the COG, everybody involved in that measure. That's, it seems very dramatic, as it was when it was introduced. It, there's been some amendments. We haven't had a chance to really understand what all of those things mean, but the concern is, again, that the state is coming down with punitive measures about how cities conduct themselves from a land themselves from a land use perspective and their expectations as to what type of capacity we can provide in terms of housing in our local communities. So that'll be coming forward to you again.
Mr. Cook, can I ask you a quick question about that?
Sure.
At this point, do we know if the guidelines or goals stipulated in the proposed SB 50 bill has any correlation with the RENA, Regional Housing Assessment Numbers? Or are those two completely separate things that have no correlation to each other?
From what the mayor actually sent us, she was, the Mayor Fish was actually at a meeting today with Senator Weiner with Contract Cities, and at least what was expressed in some of the documentation that we saw was that this was a mechanism in which to meet those RENA numbers. That's the way the legislation is being proposed. Again, we haven't had the time to really understand or analyze.
Force you to meet the RENA.
Force us to meet the RENA numbers. And we've expressed to you, and Mr. Remers has done a great job of communicating to SCAG and others, the RENA numbers that have been presented to us, which we believe are not, even with our best intentions, are not achievable numbers in practicality.
Perhaps explain what RENA numbers are.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember you. So the state of California, through one of their departments, HCD, goes through every, during circle cycle, during certain cycles, to require how many housing units must be built throughout the state of California. That is then allocated to another entity that we belong to. Councilmember Sternquist sits on this one, is called SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. They then divide those up amongst the unincorporated areas in each city, and each city is required, essentially, to say, here's how many housing units you must build within a certain amount of time. The RENA numbers that we received, and what we're on record with SCAG about, is that the RENA numbers that the state is asking us to do is more than we've built in 30 years. And we're supposed to build that in an eight-year period. That is not achievable. And that's, from even a market standpoint, it's not achievable. So to go to your question, it seems, there's not a direct connection to the RENA numbers, but it seems to be that this is a mechanism that they're trying to look at to implement that.
And I think one of the key things for the people in the audience who might not be familiar is that this bill will actually affect any development of 10 units or more, I believe, Brian. And if there's 10 units or more, then you're required to set a certain amount, percentage, I'm not sure what that percentage is, aside for affordable housing.
There are some affordable housing covenant discussion elements of the legislation, but also too, as just, just as a little more disconcerting to us, just mechanically for the city, is that if we don't meet our RENA numbers, those housing numbers, they're looking towards withholding gas tax funds or other funds as well. And not to get too long into this discussion, but the league of California cities, over several decades, have put up constitutional amendments to restrict the state's ability to take punitive actions against municipalities and counties by essentially withholding their money. So it's gonna be a long battle. Most people may have read about it in L.A. Times today, so we're on top of it, the league's on top of it, and we'll be working forward. So that's, and then, on a positive note, we're planning for Lunar New Year, again, with the Temple City Chinese American Association and staff. And then, right around the corner, will be Camellia Festival. So things are, our regular celebration season is kicking off. Thank you.
Thank you. Update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Well, SB 50 was the first thing on my plate as well, but we've talked that one out. Also interesting right now is the legal challenge to Assembly Bill 5, which, as you'll remember, was designed to sort of take independent contractors and position them as employees of the entities for which they're providing their contract services. We've been watching different analyses of how that applies to government entities, and we're feeling quite a bit better about our position vis-à-vis our contractors in the recreation department, people that work on Connect Magazine, people in those kinds of areas. But there are challenges to AB 5 in general, from truck drivers, Uber and Lyft. Actually, there was a challenge by freelancers that do media work on a very regular basis as opposed to the less regular work that we have with our freelancers for our publications here. So we'll be watching those challenges as the year goes on, and then, obviously, as Mr. Cook said, watching SB 50 very carefully. Thank you.
Was that law intended to apply to government entities, or?
It applies, it applies to government entity, it applies to all entities on its face. What we feel good about, and this really kind of gets into the weeds, but also on its face, it specifically applies to provisions of the labor code that are not very worrisome to us. When the law was signed, the concern was that it would be interpreted as applying very broadly. And it appears from everything we've been reading over the last month, month and a half, that the application of it really is being focused on these labor, labor code wage, wage orders, which really, again, go to how we're treating people as employees or independent contractors, and then what their wages are. Those wage orders, on their face, do not apply to us. So we're really not as concerned. There are some minor provisions of it that could affect some of our functioning through administrative services, but it's not the large concern that it was when the matter was signed back in October.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. We will now move on to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do anybody have anything to report?
Yeah, Mr.
Councilmember you?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protam, I do want to report on the meeting of the audit standing committee. The audit standing committee is consisting of the Mayor Protam and myself. Perhaps, we have this for a number of years, but perhaps it's good to revisit since we have some new faces today. The city employs an independent auditor every year to audit our own finances, and also as a matter of best management practice, and also as recommended by the civil grand jury a number of years ago, in light of the city of Bell and other city issues, other city finance issues, not our city, by the way, we've got a great report, that the city should be audited, and then also the independent auditor should be reporting, not so much to city staff, but report to a independent panel of the audit committee. So the city had chosen to appoint city council members, and at one time, we even have CPA on the audit committee. And so on December 20th, Mayor Protam and myself, the city manager, and our administrative services director, Susan Paragus, we met with the independent auditor, and we have, and then we gone through the, we went through the, it's what we call the exit conference, their legal term, and we gone through the final few work in their draft comprehensive annual financial report. And I'm glad to report that we passed with fine color. Again, the independent auditor gave us a very great report, and I want to comment and give credit to our administrative services director, and also our city manager and their staff of doing such a great job in upholding our finances.
Great. Thank you. And I believe we're gonna have a full report for the council next meeting, or?
Yeah, as Councilmember you stated, the report, the auditors actually work for you as the governing body. So you'll have that as a receivable file come next meeting.
Right. Thank you, Councilmember you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we will now move on to item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember you?
I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Mann?
Yeah. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year also. Just a couple of quick things. Public safety has come up frequently today, and I know it's been a topic that we cover extensively. But sometimes I think that a lot of these public safety-related issues are, we could go back to the basics. I mean, things as simple as, we deal with residential burglaries a lot, package thefts, but something as simple as, you know, getting to know your neighbors, or like installing a Ring doorbell, that goes a long way. Like, I have, I'm fortunate to have neighbors that I know very well on all sides, and our standard practice is, if we're out of town, we let everyone know, we let the sheriff's station know, they'll come by and do a check. If you're on vacation, you could call the station. If I have a package delivered, I'm lucky enough to have a Ring doorbell. I know when it arrives, I can call my neighbors at their home and help me pick it up. That's how I try to avoid package thefts. But there's a lot of things that we could, we could do if we just kind of, you know, build the relationships with our neighbors. A lot of tools at our disposal. Our sheriff's department, as great as they are, they're not going to be able to be everywhere at the same time. So a lot of times, it's us building our own safety network within our communities to prevent and thwart package thefts and other residential burglaries. Separate from that, I am looking forward to the Burgers and Brass. I've been really impressed with our captain, as well as all of our dedicated deputies the last couple of years. I think we've been, they've been taking the lead in doing a lot of, not just community events, but other things that we hadn't done in the past, that kind of, in my opinion, opens up the doors to allow our community to get to know our deputies better, get to know, you know, the captain better, Sergeant Miranda, et cetera. And I think that goes a long way to building those relationships, the Neighborhood Watch meetings, our monthly sheriff's station, our monthly morning meetings that Mayor Protam alluded to earlier at the end of the month. We just wish more people knew about it, and more people would participate, because I think that's the only way that we can maintain and try to make our city even safer than it is now. But I really want to extend my thanks and gratitude for their hard work, as well as all the Neighborhood Watch volunteers that dedicate countless hours. So many of, you don't hear a lot of their discussions, but they're constantly thinking about different ways that we can spread good information to help our residents. So I really want to extend my appreciation, and looking forward to a year's worth of new Neighborhood Watch topics that are, have always been relevant, pertinent, and very helpful to our residents. And also, just a double, quick double check, our Lunar New Year festival is on February 1st, is that correct, Saturday? From 12 to, is it 4? 12 to 4? Okay. So I know we have another meeting in between that, but I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes, Happy New Year to everyone. I did want to remind everyone about the Neighborhood Watch, that the, a part of that Neighborhood Watch meeting will consist of the coyote management plan that we became part of.
Oh, are they gonna be there?
So I believe they've been working with the sheriff's department, Brian.
Yeah, actually, we're meeting tomorrow to finalize some stuff with the COG and be ready for our first community, Neighborhood Watch meeting.
Great. And I will have to say that the Ring doorbell has been a really big help to me. I received a picture that someone posted saying that there was a coyote on the corner of my street, and it was just really helpful for me to make another effort to go in and get my small dogs. And usually, I'm really conscious of having coyotes in our city, but sometimes I'll leave them unattended for maybe half an hour, but it was a really good reminder to always be aware that they are in our neighborhood, and they will do what they need to do. So I think this will see the money that we spent on the coyote management plan in action. So hopefully, it'll be good.
Good.
And that's about it.
It's a busy night.
That's the picture, I think I see.
Well, actually, yeah. Well, that's, actually, it happened to be a coyote that's near my house that I run into a lot. It's actually sad to see it as a ma- major, you know? And actually, it's funny, because last, last weekend, I went to Santa Fe Dam and see one coyote actually in the nature. So much more beautiful in the hair and everything. I mean, unfortunately, urban environment is really not good for a coyote either. I mean, look at this one, it's beautiful. I mean, it's in this nature.
Does that mean we get the homeless coyotes?
Yeah, I think we're getting the homeless coyotes, unfortunately.
Yeah. It is, it is an issue, I know, unfortunately, but, you know, that's a busy night, the 16th? Neighborhood Watch and the Burgers and Brass. We're gonna have to shuffle back and forth. You know, I'm glad Councilmember Mann brought up the comments about the, you know, the issues regarding this public safety. You know, I think one thing is clear, that this council takes that very seriously, as well as our sheriff staff, and we work very well, and that's why the numbers reflect that, I think. You know, Captain Flores is sitting right there in the back, I don't want to embarrass him, but, you know, he doesn't live in Temple City, but he's here. He's always here. And I think he, that's because he cares about our community, as well as all of the deputies that work for him, and they do care about it, and I think it shows. And, you know, Captain Flores, I know, always preaches to us, is, you know, you see something, you say something. And similar to what Steve mentioned earlier, when you see something, you say it, and, you know, we'll take care of it. It'd be nice if we could eliminate crime entirely, but then that would put Captain out of a job, and I don't think he wants that. But, you know, we can, we do have a very relatively safe city, and we want to keep it that way, except for the coyotes, of course, but it's always an issue, but we'll get around to that. You know, the only other thing, is there a class that local politicians take once they're elected to state office to forget everything that they learned at the local level before they, when they get up there? I mean, you don't want to comment.
No comment, sir.
No comment. It's just that every time we hear these reports and these, they, they're all contrary to what I'm sure many of these elected officials did down here in the local level, and then they get to the state level and they seem to forget it.
Well, I think this one in particular, Senator Weiner, Senator, right? Senator Weiner has reintroduced this bill in different forms, more.
Until he gets it passed, is what he wants to do.
Right. So they, he edits things and changes the wording, so the COG will do whatever they can to support a letter of opposition. And also, I know Anthony Portantino has opposed this bill twice, so he is a friend of ours in that respect. And if you happen to be out and come across him in any city events, please bend his ear a little bit about this.
And you raise a good point, and that is that, you know, in addition to what we can do at the local level, you know, our participation in regional affairs, such as Councilmember Sternquist with the COG, and, you know, always helpful, and we've always stated that that's one of the reasons that we do get involved in those, so that we can have that bigger voice and do things, do things that may affect or have an effect on us. So, good. All right. So again, Happy New Year to everyone, and 2020, I think, is gonna be a fantastic year, and we'll just keep improving as we go. Okay. We'll now move on to item 15, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Anybody like to get up to this point and, any additional public comments? Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, I will close public comments. So before we adjourn tonight, I would like to take a few moments to perhaps close our meeting, and I'm honored, of course, to close this meeting in memory of a very special person, very special resident of Temple City, Yvonne Malali. Larry is in the audience, her husband, tonight, as well as many family members and friends. Yvonne, many of you know, has been a proud citizen of Temple City since her family moved here. She's six years old, I believe, at the time, which is over 60 years that she lived here in Temple City. I knew her as an active parishioner, of course, at St. Luke's Catholic Church. Yvonne came from a large family, children, one of eight children, big family. Yvonne attended Pasadena University College and Cal State Los Angeles here locally. She taught 5th grade at St. Luke's Elementary School from 1972 to 1974, and of course, was married to Larry. And of course, was married to Larry, who of course has lived here in Temple City for a very, very long time. They lived in the same house for forty-six years. Yvonne and Larry have three children, all who attended Saint Luke's Elementary School. She was very active in her children's activities, where she also served on the parish council at Saint Luke's for some time. Shortly after her son Larry was deployed to Iraq, she became an active supporter of the Blue Star Program. So, as you can tell, she was very involved with her community. One of the things that was shared with us is that throughout her life, she would talk to anyone. And I remember that, that she was very easy to get along with and talk with and very outgoing and friendly and would never, of course, prejudge anybody. She would take you as you were and, and make you feel better about yourself. I, I, here's a statement here I thought is very descriptive of her, and that is, friends were family. She treated her friends as family, and I think that's a, a great attribute to have. Always selfless, always worried about others, and always concerned about others' needs and always came first. So, you know, great woman, great member of our community, and we're going to miss her. Larry, we, you know, we're sorry for your loss and family members as well. And, you know, we, we, we send our prayers out to all of you and, and thank you for sharing Yvonne with us for the many years. And so, with that, we will close tonight's meeting in her honor. Thank you.